To order the Monday, April 22 meeting of the Verona Common Council and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call, Ms. Lynch, please.
Alderperson Charles.
Good evening.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Present.
Alderperson Manley.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Riki.
Present.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
And Alderperson Yers.
Here.
We have a quorum, we have everyone present this evening, thank you for that. Next we will move along on the agenda, we have public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? On the third and final time, anyone who wishes to speak under public comment? Seeing none, we will move along then with the agenda. Next is approval of minutes from the April 8th, 2013, and the April 16th Common Council meetings. The minutes were included with your packet, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Charles, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yers, were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous two meetings? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, the first thing I have to do is, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day, and I will read that. The city has been involved and has been a tree city for 18 years, so let me read the proclamation. Whereas Arbor Day was first observed in Nebraska in 1872 by the planting of more than 1 million trees throughout the state, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed in all 50 states from Maine to California, and whereas the city of Verona has earned the title of Tree City USA for the past 18 years and annually celebrates Arbor Day, whereas trees in our city increase property values, beautify our community, and protect our environment. Now therefore I, John Hokumer, Mayor of the city of Verona, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013 as Arbor Day in the city of Verona, and encourage all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees in order to perpetuate our urban forest and ensure the beauty and value of our community for generations to come, and that is dated this 22nd day of April, 2013. Next, we have a few citizen appointments this evening. The first one that we have is, I would ask for your confirmation of Mr. McGilvery to serve on the Madison Area Sports Commission. Mr. McGilvery was the initial member of the Sports Commission when it was formed, that was a couple of years ago, and I'll give you a little background on that in just a bit. And then Mr. Solowitz, Mr. Solowitz had been on the Madison Area Sports Commission. Due to the fact, a few years ago, the city of Verona increased our room tax dollars by 1 percent. We did this, so did the city of Middleton, so did the city of Fitchburg, and it was an attempt that we worked with the city of Madison and Dane County to create this Madison Area Sports Commission where we could encourage and support additional sports activities coming to this area, and it helps with heads in the beds and economic development and tourism, so we're very supportive of that. In light of the fact that we did that, each one of those municipalities automatically got a seat on their Board of Directors. So that's a little bit background of why that occurs, and I would ask for your confirmation of the appointment of Mr. McGilvery to the Madison Area Sports Commission. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion from the body?
I do.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Are there any questions on the appointment of Mr. McGilvery to the Madison Area Sports Commission? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, thank you for being willing to do that, and we informed, or I informed Deb Archer that we would let her know as soon as possible when the appointment was made. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the community but also the broader community. It was, it was tough for me to step down when I did, I guess, a year and a half ago. I was traveling a lot at the time, and it was one of those things that I felt the community would be better served if we had somebody who was going to on a regular basis. I'm here, I'm excited to get back to doing it, it's a great group of people, and I do some, some good stuff, it's good to work with, you know, Mesa and Little League, whatever it is, to bring additional people to the city, so thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mac, for doing that. Next on the agenda, we have other citizen appointments to boards and commissions. You receive the one pager in front of you, just a couple of things, very quickly. I just wanted to point out that each one of these individuals is currently serving, and when I contacted them, they, they agreed and they desire to be reappointed, so that's one issue. Second issue is, there were two individuals, one of them having served on two boards, is willing to continue to serve on one but not the other one, so we have vacancies on the zoning board of appeals and one vacancy on the Community Development Authority. Neither one of those meet often or have met, you know, for, for quite some time, but we wanted to give people an opportunity that if they are interested to serve, to, to make us aware of that. We have received some, some names of people that are interested in serving, and that's great, but one other additional thing I wanted to point out this evening is that if anyone contacts you and they are interested in serving, make sure that you clarify with them that the standing committees are only made up of city council, of alders. So I had one individual who requested to be on four different committees, and three of them are standing committees of the city council. So I will have a conversation with that individual, and certainly we're, you know, glad to see that there's interest in serving, but the standing committees are strictly for people on the council. So with that explanation, I would ask for your confirmation of the people outlined on the sheet. Mr. Charles?
Two things, number one, you said there, notwithstanding these appointments, there is still an opening on the ZBA and the CDA?
That is correct.
Okay.
And it would be our intent to fill it as soon as we have, you know, a name to bring forward.
Sounds good, thank you. And I will make a motion to approve the citizen appointments as listed.
We have a motion by Mr. Charles, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Riki, were there any questions on the appointments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries, I thank you for that. That, for now at least, concludes my business, so we will move on to the Administrator's report, Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you, I have a few updates I'd like to make this evening. First of all, I wanted to remind everyone that there is going to be a public meeting held tomorrow related to the traffic analysis for the Epic Campus. That is going to be held at 6:30 PM here at City Hall, and the city's consultant from ACOM will be making a presentation of the findings of that traffic analysis. City staff and representatives from Epic will be available to answer questions, and we will also be getting an electronic copy of the recommendations from that study and posting that information on the city website following the meeting tomorrow. Also coming up this week on Thursday, there's the Chamber of Commerce's annual meeting where there's the State of the City presentation. Mayor Hokumer, myself, and our Director of Planning are going to be available at that meeting, providing a general update and also some information on the downtown project. That meeting is going to be held at 7:30 AM on the 25th. Reminder that this Friday, there is going to be a ceremony on Arbor Day held at the Verona Senior Center, that is going to be lunch at 11:45 with a short presentation at 12:15 this Friday. Coming up next week, there is going to be a meeting of the Madison Area Transportation Planning Board, or MPO, that's going to be hosted here in Verona, and they move their meetings around to different locations around the county. So their, their May meeting on May 1st will be here at City Hall at 7:00 PM, and again they've asked for some information on Epic and the transportation issues at Epic, so city staff and Epic will be providing some information to the board at that time. Discover Wisconsin is airing an episode featuring the city of Verona. This is an episode on the southern segment of the Ice Age Trail, which is highlighting four communities, one of which is Verona. That episode aired this past Saturday, there'll be two additional airings coming up, and that's also available now on the Discover Wisconsin website, under Communities and Verona. And then finally, the Downtown Steering Committee held a meeting last Friday, the 19th, to go over some preliminary options for the transportation improvements. We'll be talking about that at the chamber meeting again, and then we are planning to schedule another public meeting sometime in the month of May to go through those concepts, get feedback from the public, and then from there, we as a community will be trying to narrow down to one preferred option to flesh out a full redevelopment plan. So that meeting does need to be scheduled, we'll be sending out some possible dates very shortly so we can get that scheduled and on people's calendars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, Phil, thank you. Next we will have a report from our engineer, Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Two items this evening, the first is update on Well 5 Reservoir and Well House. Contractor has been delayed by wet weather but has been able to complete two concrete pores for the reservoir floor. The wellhouse floor will be poured next, and then the contractor will start on the walls of the structure. Contractor has completed the extension, the extension of the utilities to the wellhouse. Completion of the wellhouse and reservoir is scheduled for August 31st. And the last item this evening is the Lincoln Street culvert, culvert replacement. The Lincoln Street culvert replacement project is currently in the bidding process. Bids will be taken here at City Hall on May 7th. Construction will commence on or after June 10th, and all construction, construction is scheduled for completion by September 13th. During the time the culvert is being replaced, Lincoln Street, south of the driveways into City Hall here, will be closed to traffic, and a marked detour will be in place. The construction area is basically from Switzer Street to just, just north of the culvert, and the culvert is just about where the drainage ditch is outside of the building here. So that's an existing, three corrugated metal pipes, they're going to be replaced with a dual box culvert, concrete box culvert, and there's going to be some channel improvements made out here so that the ragweed issue that we see will be eliminated, or hopefully eliminated. So that completes my report for this evening, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock this evening? Not seen any, Bob, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we will move on then to committee reports, we will begin with the Finance Committee, Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9A1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $371,049.25.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second? Second by Mr. Manley, Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we have explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, the first being to ACOM Technical Services in the amount of $35,397. The large part of that would be for the Epic Traffic Study, which is a TIF 7 expense. Secondly, we have Alliant Energy, excuse me, Alliant Energy April Service in the amount of $26,104.72. And finally, Madison Metro Sewage District, first quarter sewage service and pumping stations,
You have heard the explanation of the major expenditures, are there any questions for the Finance Committee or for city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $371,049.25. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 92, the city received a claim of excessive assessment for the 2012 tax year for the property at 605 Military Ridge Drive, which is owned by Virginia Melzer. This claim is seeking the refund of property taxes in the amount of $880.95. It asserts that the fair market value of the property is $125,000, and the assessment of $162,900 is excessive. The Board of Review reviewed an objection on 2012 assessment of the property on July 30th, 2012, and voted to sustain the original assessment. The claim of excessive assessment is dated April 8th, 2013, and was received by the city on April 12th, 2013. This is after the statutorily required filing date of January 31st. At this time, I would make a motion to deny the claim for excessive assessment for the property located at 605 Military Ridge Drive, parcel number 0608-232-6910-2, and uphold the Board of Review's original objection.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Charles, are there any questions on the motion? It's pretty straightforward, this is something that we see from time to time. Seeing no questions, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, anything else from Finance Committee?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll move on then to Public Works Sewer and Water Committee, Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Under item 9B1, I'll make the motion to approve change order number three for the construction of well number five, which is a deduct of $3,577. Or, excuse me, $3,577.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Riki, Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. The reason for the change order and the deduct is the final adjustment of the contract amount to account for actual conditions and counting during construction of well number five, it's always nice to have deducts.
And again, for the benefit of those watching at home, this is something that was on the agenda earlier today at the Public Works Committee, so from time to time we mention that it, maybe we don't ask a lot of questions at the council level, but a lot of the work is done at the committee level and then brought forward, so everyone is fully aware of what's happening, but really the, the main part of the discussion and any questions has already occurred in a, at a committee level. Seeing no questions to the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Under item 9B2, again, I'll make a motion to approve a professional service agreement with Rookert Milkie for a GIS system in the amount not to exceed $45,650.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle, Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Just a brief description here, the engineering firm of Rookert Milkie has been retained by the city of Verona to develop a GIS system for the city's utility records and other property information. This agreement right here is a component of the ongoing development of that agreement. This agreement is for the development of an Esri Arc GIS service, or excuse me, server Work associated with this agreement is based on a review of the existing city's GIS water utility files. At Public Works, we did go over this, it did have unanimous Public Works support. We do have Mr. Reader here, or Mr. Gunlock, who could speak more to the details of it if you would like.
Are there any questions from the Common Council for the committee or for staff? Any questions? Just a brief comment, I think Mr. Reader did a good job at the committee level, and he talked about, you know, the importance of doing this, and not only to document things for, for future as we see new employees, but also a question that Mr. Diaz had, and that relates to the public's access of some information down the road, and we look forward to having more information available for property owners for their own property. So we see this as a very positive thing. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, anything else from Public Works Sewer and Water?
No, sir, that would be all, thank you.
Thank you. We will move on then to Public Safety and Welfare Committee, Mr. Manley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C1, I'll make a motion to approve an application for a temporary Class B license for hometown days to occur June 6th through the 9th, 2013, from the Rotary Club of Fitchburg and Verona.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yers, Mr. Manley?
Thank you. This is, if the body recalls, we approved the actual special event permit for the hometown days event a number of months ago, and this Class B beer license will allow for the beer tent at that event. We talked about this at Public Safety and Welfare Committee today and gave our unanimous recommendation, and the, the times of the day where beer would be allowed to be served at the beer tent would match the event itself, which for Friday is from 5:00 to 12:30 AM, Saturday, I'm sorry, Thursday, from 5:00 PM to 12:30 AM, Friday from 5:00 PM to 12:30, or I'm sorry, 1 o'clock AM, Saturday noon to 1 o'clock AM, and Sunday noon to 8 o'clock PM.
You've heard the explanation from Mr. Manley, are there any questions from the Seeing no questions, all those in favor of the approval of the temporary Class B license for hometown days signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. Under item 9C2, I'll make a motion to approve an application for a special event permit for a mud run to be held on Saturday, May 18th, and Sunday, May 19th, from Ryan Richards of Race Day Events LLC.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Riki, Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, this item on the agenda is the special event permit for, for the mud run. It's a fundraiser for the Eagle's Nest and the, the youth ice rink. The next item on the agenda is their, is their Class B beer permit, but I think that what would be important for the body to be aware of is that the two-day event, Saturday, May 18th, is, they're doing something new this year where it's actually a mud run for children, and then the very next day, on Sunday, it's the mud run for the adults, and the difference, you'll note on the agenda that the beer permit is only for the second day, and so they're not doing, they're not doing the beer permit in conjunction with the, the children's mud run event, but it's, it's always been a great event, and I think a lot of fun for the participants, and, and certainly an event that I think we're lucky to have here in Verona, and, and benefiting youth sports, it's for, it's for a good cause.
Thank you, Mr. Manley, for that explanation. Are there any questions or comments from the council? The motion before you is to approve an application for a special event for the mud run to be held on Saturday, May 18th, and Sunday, May 19th, from Ryan Richards and Race Day Events LLC. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9C3, I'll make a motion to approve an application for a temporary Class B license for a mud run to be held on Sunday, May 19th, from Mike O'Brien of ICE Inc.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, second by Mr. Charles, was that, Mr. Charles? Thank you. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Class B license for the event that we just talked about, and what I thought was noteworthy when we discussed this at committee this evening is that Mike O'Brien shared with us that the, the significant success that they've had in fundraising for these events has really enabled them to, to keep the Eagle's Nest open, period, and not just keep it operational, which I think a community of our size, we're very fortunate to have, an ice arena, but able to do some great things like fix the broken chiller, buy some new skates, and really feels like this event has, in the past and going forward, really allowing them to do some, some great things to get our, you know, the young people in our community involved in skating and hockey, so I ask for the body's support.
Thank you, Mr. Manley, are there any questions for the committee or for city staff? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley, please.
Thank you. Under item 9C4, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 13-826, amending section 27 of chapter one of Title 10 of our quote of ordinance as related to parking enforcement.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yers, Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance proposes to restrict a couple of areas of parking along the Investment Court cul-de-sac. It came to the, to the Public Safety and Welfare Committee based on a request from Heritage Tile located at 312 Investment Court, and the property owner was, runs a tile business, and was denied a couple of shipments of tile because the parking along the cul-de-sac was preventing the trucks from being able to get in and get out and make deliveries, especially here with the winter that we had, and, and then the street being even more narrow than, than it was previously or ordinarily because of the snowbanks, and so although the ordinance before the body this evening proposes to restrict a couple of areas of parking, it also proposes to take an area that's currently restricted and open it back up to parking so that we're looking at probably a net loss of only two spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Are there questions for the committee or, Police Chief Coughlin is here, any other questions for the committee or the city staff? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley?
Thank you. Under item 9C5, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R-13-6, approving an intergovernmental agreement for operation of an impaired driving task force for 2013.
We have a motion by Mr. Manley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Charles, Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the resolution we have before us this evening would allow Verona to once again participate in a high visibility enforcement effort among our community and some of the surrounding jurisdictions for OWI or impaired driving enforcement. It's, as it was last year, it would involve other communities coming to Verona to assist in some swarm patrols, and we talked about it this evening and gave our unanimous recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Manley, are there any questions on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Manley, is there anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
There is nothing further.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. We'll move on. Under Old Business, we have discussion and possible action regarding selection of city council representative to the planning commission. Just, just a few comments here. Number one is, this is a little bit different than how we handle other committee appointments, and our city ordinances, which, which follow the state statutes, require that we have a two-thirds vote or a minimum of six votes from the common council, the mayor does not get to vote, six votes from the common council to select one of their own to serve on the planning commission. The state statutes do not require that it is a two-thirds vote, but the city ordinances do. So therefore we do need eight, or we need six of the eight votes for common council, from the common council for the planning commission. So some of you that have been on the council before, and you're probably aware of this because we talked about this last Tuesday night, this is not the practice that we have followed in the past, but when Bill and I saw in the ordinances what our ordinances state, and once we knew what, what the rules were, we both said immediately, we're going to follow the rules. So we made everyone on the council aware that that's what the rules were. Secondly, I thought perhaps this helps, I wanted to talk a little bit about the function of the planning commission, and the planning commission serves a different purpose than what the city council does. And with the exception of site plan approval, which comes, which the, the planning commission has the authority to, to approve, but even for site plan approval, there has to be some upfront work that, that is done by the planning commission and then goes to the city council for approval. But with the exception of site plan approval, if we're looking at matters that are related to zoning, or platting, annexation, conditional use permits, or general development plans, all of those issues, even after review by the planning commission, come to the city council for approval. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone on the council and those that are watching at home understand that, that by far the majority of the actions that are taken by the planning commission are recommended actions in, in nature, and that the full council gets an opportunity to, to have a voice in those issues. The other thing is that there are a number, a number of items that when they come to the planning commission, require a public hearing, and whenever required by public law to have a public hearing, we do have a public hearing. Planning commission different- a public hearing. Plan Commission differs, differs a little bit than what city council does, is that there's not a public comment portion on the Plan Commission agendas, with the exception of the fact if we are required to have a public hearing. And every time that we are required, we, we do so. So I just wanted to make those, those comments upfront, and I don't know if that makes a difference in, in anyone's opinions or decisions, but I thought, I thought it might be helpful. So with that, we are under Old Business, and potential motions are in order at this point.
I nominate Dale Yours for the Plan Commission.
We have a motion to, actually, a nomination of Mr. Yours to the Plan Commission. Are there any further nominations? Mr. Charles?
I nominate Scott Manley to the Plan Commission.
Mr. Manley has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for the Plan Commission? Are there any further nominations for the Plan Commission? Any further nominations? Seeing none, we will call the question. This is-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, so I'm familiar with Mr. Manley's work on the Plan Commission. I had a year where I was able to observe him in the Plan Commission role before he was on the council. I'm not familiar with Mr. Yours' philosophies, and in the reverse, I'm sure there are folks here who aren't familiar, as familiar with Mr. Manley as I am, so I'm wondering if each nominee could perhaps make a statement to let us know what, you know, encourage us to vote one way or the other.
Mr. Charles, that's a, a good question, and that is, that is certainly allowable. We can't force anyone to make a statement, but anyone who desires to make a statement may do so. Mr. Yours, I'll ask you. Mr. Manley?
Sure. Well, first of all, let me thank Mr. Charles for nominating me. I guess, from my perspective, I, I think I spent about two years on the Plan Commission as a public member, and only left the Plan Commission when I be, was elected to serve on the city council, and it was, it was actually very disappointing for me at, at the time that I had to give up the Plan Commission because I enjoyed, you know, reviewing those types of projects and, and, and seeing that policy firsthand, and, and serving with, with the fellow commission members. But I think it, it gave me a, a perspective. It gave me some good experience, and, and now I feel like, having had that experience at the Plan Commission level, and then reviewing a lot of those same types of proposals as a member of the city council, I'm prepared to give that perspective and bring that voice to the Plan Commission. I think that, you know, we're only allowed to have one city council member on the Plan Commission, and I, I think it's, it's really, I mean, aside from, you know, the, the experience and so forth, I think it's really important that that individual, that this body selects an individual who has, you know, some experience in both areas, serving on the Plan Commission and serving on the city council, so that, you know, when, when that, when you're filling that role, you can sort of understand how the council works, what the perspective of the city council is, what types of questions the city council typically asks of applicants, what the city council typically expects from a development standpoint, you know, understanding the comprehensive planning exercise that we went through a number of years ago, understanding the decisions that we've made relative to zoning, and, and I think, you know, what I would offer to you is that having served in, in both capacities and, and been a part of those exercises, that, that I bring that experience to the table. Beyond that, I guess I would just say that my, my philosophy from a, from a development standpoint is that I think we as a city ought to be encouraging development. We grow, as we grow our tax base, we're able to more easily fund the kinds of city services that I think the people that we all represent think are important, like, you know, things as simple as, as, you know, police and fire protection, keeping the, the streets plowed and maintained in, in good order. But, you know, but also, you know, I, I think at some point, a lot of us would like to see things like a, a city pool. And I know that my family in particular, and a lot of the people in our neighborhood, would, would love to see something like that, but it all costs money, and our budget is tight as it is, and I think that the, the, the way we can get there is to be able to grow our tax base. And I think not only do I believe in, in growth and development, but I believe in very high-quality growth and development. I think we need to be selective about the type of growth that we allow in our city, because I think, you know, some of our surrounding communities haven't done a particularly good job of managing their growth and having orderly development, and, and growing in a way that I think that the people who live in our community want to see us grow. And my experience on, on the Plan Commission for, for the few years that, that I was fortunate, fortunate enough to serve as a, as a public member, and then my experience on the city council in reviewing a lot of the Plan Commission's work has been one of, let's hold applicants to an absolutely high standard for quality development in this city. And if we have developers who are not interested in meeting our expectations for high-quality development and, you know, high levels of, of architecture and building materials, and, you know, having the, the types of buildings built in our city that, that we can all be proud of, then I don't think they should be approved. And, and so that's, that's a little bit about my experience and development philosophy.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Mr. Yours?
Well, first off, I'd like to state that I don't think anybody can argue with wanting high quality and high standards. And I, I'm sure that's somewhere where me and Mr. Manley completely agree on. Speaking to experience, I may not have served on a council or a committee before, but I've spent my whole life preparing for this type of work. I, as a young kid, in middle school and high school, I worked in the Wisconsin State Senate. I have a master's degree in U.S. Constitutional History, have taught government at both the college level and, and the primary level. I have devoted my life to this type of work, and so it's something that I'm sure I have the capability of. And one of the big things I'd want to point out is, the people of Verona just spoke pretty loudly a few weeks ago, and the direction that they want the city to go. And I want some of these new voices to be brought into the fold. If you look at some of the other committees, such as the Finance Committee, there's only one of those voices on that committee. So I thought this would be an area where some of those new voices, new ideas, could be brought to the city. And I'm eager and interested to work with the rest of the council, with the rest of the city, to, to bring what's best, and, and to really make sure that we grow in a responsible manner.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. With that, we have two individuals that have been nominated, as we discussed two this evening at the organizational meeting. This is not an election of officers, so there is no secret vote. So I will go, if we have one or more than one rounds of elections here, I will always go, call the name of the person who was nominated first. So at this point, individuals who would support the nomination or the appointment of Mr. Yours to the Plan Commission, please raise their hands. We have five. Mr. Manley. Hands for Mr. Manley. We have three. No one has received the necessary six minimum, so I would open nominations for a second round.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, I would nominate Mr. Charles.
Mr. Charles has been nominated. Are there any further nominations for the Plan Commission? Mr. Steiner?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Mr. Yours.
Mr. Yours has been nominated. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, the nominations have been closed. Ms... Go ahead, Ms. Riki.
I think in addition to what Mr. Yours said about basic underlying beliefs and philosophies about developing Verona, I would like to add that I just know many of my constituents now who called me with questions about, that they wanted to know answers to, to help them decide whether or not to vote for me, were very strongly concerned about the environmental impact of any development and annexation of land without putting it on municipal water and sewer. And I think that I got a lot of votes based on that, and I think that the other four, the other three people who were recently voted into office also got votes based on that. And so I would like to have people take that into account as well when making this decision.
Thank you, Ms. Riki. Any additional comments at this point? Mr. McIlroy?
As long as we're opening up for comments, what I would say is, in nine years that I've been on the council, I, I could probably accumulate the votes that I've received too. And I, I've spent nine years in this commu, community, dedicated to this community. Not once have I served on the Plan Commission. I have a background in construction. I'm certainly engaged in the community, and I would love to have had that opportunity. But I would say that there were people who put in the work ahead of time, and waited their turn, and they got on. And part of what we have here, I, I don't disagree that the people spoke, Mr. Yours, but the people speak to me too, and I'm not, just because I didn't get elected this time around, doesn't mean that I'm any less relevant to the decision process. And what I would say, and I would offer to all you, is in all likelihood, there will be an election next year that may involve four new people running against the four incumbents, in which case you all will be the old dogs, and you will be responsible for carrying forward the city's good work. What I would offer to you is, I think the mayor alluded to this a little bit, this isn't a matter of the council saying that you won't be involved in any of these planning decisions. It's important for you all to realize that these planning decisions you will make right here. The difference is, bringing things forward out of Plan Commission in the event, this isn't a knock on Mr. Yours or whoever else might be running, but in the event that the mayor's not there, you have to be able to run those meetings. This is, again, I haven't had the opportunity to see how you all will, will react in those situations, and I know over the next year, we will have the opportunity to work with you all on committee level, put a hand out. This is, I have every intention to make sure that you four can do the work of the city at the end of my term, if I'm not reelected. So I would, I would at least ask that you take that into consideration. This is not a knock on Mr. Yours, and I appreciate that you are passionate about it. My nine years, I have been passionate about it. I have put a lot of time into this. And I know you grew up here. My wife grew up here. My children have grown up here. My passion is certainly no less, but I have not yet served on that Plan Commission. I have had to serve other places where the city needed me. And it took me time to get to where I am now, where I actually get to chair two committee-level meetings. And trust me, chairing isn't always the best thing. There's a lot of work that goes into it. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. McIlroy. Mr. Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to give Mr. Charles, who I've got a lot of respect for, his service, his past service on the Plan Commission. If, if I'm not mistaken, he was the citizen appointee who filled the vacancy when, when I left. And I'd like to at least give him the opportunity to talk a little bit about his experience on the, on the Plan Commission, and, and why he would be qualified to serve.
Mr. Charles?
I was just waiting for everybody else to finish. I figured since I started this whole making a statement thing, I owe everybody taking my turn. I'm a little concerned that a lot of our comments about being on the Plan Commission have focused on things other than what one's philosophies would be as they come to the Plan Commission. While I appreciate Mr. Yours' lifelong desire to get into city government and studying such things, and I do appreciate the fact that we have new voices on the council that the, that the voters put here, I don't think that putting somebody in a position such as the Plan Commission purely for that reason is sufficient. I think a lot of it has to do with the philosophy that you bring. My philosophy is that we have a number of conflicting and, and perhaps complimentary, complimentary forces that come to play in the proposals that come before the Plan Commission. It's really no secret, and kind of a no-brainer, that any developer or builder that comes here to Verona primarily comes here because they can make money. They want to build stuff, they want to sell it, they want to make some cash, and they want to keep their business alive. On the other side, we have the people who come to Verona to be residents, and they are coming here because we as the city have, over time, built a community that is desirable. The streets are well-maintained, the schools are great, we've done a good job taking care of the environment, so the place functions well, we have good city parks, all that kind of stuff. And a lot of that starts at the Plan Commission level. And I think one of the big things we can do at that level is to take advantage of the first group a little bit, to help protect and promote the interests of the second group. And that's one of the main things I did while I was on the Plan Commission, and I've done here ever since. We, a, a big reason we, we allow and sometimes promote the right kinds of development here is, again, like was mentioned earlier, to diversify our tax base. If you look back in recent budget proposals that have been given, we've done a good job of taking the tax burden, which was pretty much all on the homeowners at one point, and started to diversify that by bringing in some good-quality commercial industrial development to help share that burden. And the percentages have started to shift. We're still relying a lot on the homeowners to pay for all the services here, but we are starting to build a better percentage of, of good-quality commercial industrial development. Another area where we've had some success in handling development is protecting our environment. As Verona has growed along, grown along it, the Badger Mill Creek was restored to a trout-fishing stream. Okay? It was not at one point. It now is. And during that exact same timeline, the city of Verona has grown along its shores. Okay? We have done a good job of growing responsibly and protecting that environmental resource, which by the way, downstream, the county just put several million dollars into buying land because it is such a sought-after resource that we have protected for everyone to make use of. We also created the Stormwater Utility within the last couple of years. That is a funding mechanism that we can use to continue to protect the environment by improving our stormwater facilities. And in fact, the work you're going to see down the street here that Mr. Gunlock spoke of earlier with redoing the Lincoln Street Channel and whatnot, that is another key protection of the environment while we work on this downtown revitalization and redevelopment, that I know at least four of you on, on the council here were elected as one of your primary talking points during the campaigns. Guess what? That is all work that has happened the last few years while I've been involved in it, that has set the stage for what you're now going to be able to do. Knowing that background, and this sequence of events, and being able to carry it forward is a very important thing, as Mr. McIlroy alluded to. The other thing, a couple of thing, other things, as was alluded to, we did, we did our, or we wrote our comprehensive plan under the state's Smart Growth Law. I was on the, on the citizen committee that reviewed every single page of that comp, plan. There, I guarantee you, there's not a single person in this room other than me who can say that they've actually read, commented on, critiqued, and edited every single page of that plan. I know what's in there. I know how we plan to grow. I know how we're going to do it while protecting the environment, and I know how we're going to pay for it. Okay? I think that's a very strong suit. The other part of managing our growth, like Mr. Manley said, is making sure it's high-quality, but also keeping up our city services as we grow. Yeah, you know, Ms. Riki alluded to the Brown Farm with annexing, annexing property that's not on city sewer and water and whatnot. I mean, I, yeah, that's a challenge for us. That's a tough issue for us to consider. How are we going to do that while protecting the environment, maintaining city services, keeping this a desirable place to live, and a functional place to live for everybody who's here? These are all balancing acts. You know, this growth and development of our community is a, is a big series of compromises between a lot of forces that often oppose each other. I've been involved personally in this work for the past four or five years. Before I became involved in it, I studied it right here in this, well, actually, in the building that's not there anymore across the parking lot, you know, for a couple of years before that. And I think I've got a good, solid background for continuing the great work we've done, and for moving it forward. So that's why I ask for your vote for the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Any additional comments at this point? Seeing none, the two individuals that have been nominated are Mr. Charles and Mr. Yours. All those wishing to support Mr. Charles, please raise their hands. Mr. Charles has three votes. Those supporting Mr. Yours, please raise your hands. We have five votes. Again, the necessary six votes. No one reached that level, so we are opening again for nominations.
A question. Are you going to sit here all night voting? Because I'm prepared to sit here all night voting, but I don't get the sense that we're going to reach a consensus.
Could you turn your microphone on, please, so the folks at home can hear you? Thanks.
My apologies. My, my question was, are we going-
My question was, are we going to sit here all night voting? Because I'm perfectly fine sitting here all night voting, but I kind of get the sense that we're not going to reach a two-thirds majority. And of course, I'm looking at the city ordinances right now, and I don't see a requirement that we have an alder on the Plan Commission, although obviously, it's something we, I think we would all want. But if we're not going to reach the point where we can agree to it, I'm wondering if we can try to take this up later.
We certainly can take it up later. The, in conversations with legal counsel, the legal counsel said that, you know, certainly is the intent that appointment is made at the organizational committee, which was last week Tuesday. It didn't occur there, and we put it on the agenda here. We can continue to vote as many rounds as we need to this evening. It can, it can be put on a future committee agenda, but following this meeting, if we do not have a member of the council on the Plan Commission, then we are short one member of the Plan Commission. We still can have, you know, we can still have a meeting, hopefully if there's a quorum, we can still have a meeting, and I can bring the information back to the city. But if we do not have someone with the minimum six votes, there will be no one from the city council that can serve on the Plan Commission until that successful vote occurs. So it is, it is up to the body. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. I wonder, all right, I've heard from two, and I spoke, so I, obviously, I know what the three that are voting opposite of the four, in this case, five, are voting, but I wonder if the new members of the council might speak to what it is they're worried about, or what concerns they might have. Bring something to the table and explain to me what it is that we're hoping to accomplish. I know what I'm hoping to accomplish because I've been part of the process for quite a while, but I would like to hear from my other members, if I could.
As I initially made the comment, we can request of individuals if they desire to speak, but we are not able to twist anyone's arm, so.
Don't have a fire, so yes, you're right.
It's only if those individuals wish to speak. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to give their opinion at this point?
Well, certainly, you know, one of the things, you know, as I campaigned, I'm wondering why the downtown is such an issue today. One of the things I've, not, this isn't my, this isn't my words, but a lot of people I spoke with said, they feel that the downtown has been ignored by recent councils, and that's, and that's why we're in the predicament that we're in now. Having spoken with former mayors of the community, we walked down Main Street, and he pointed out areas where that statue commemorating veterans is crumbling from the base up, other aesthetic changes. Also, you know, there's an empty building downtown, yet we've been expanding on our fringes a great deal. I have no problem with bringing business into town. I want business to come into town. I love Adelweiss Cheese. Adelweiss Cheese, I think, is one of the perfect-style business for the city of Verona, something that sets us aside from other communities, something that keeps people here in town. One thing, while speaking with people from Epic, I hear they're constantly having to push people into Madison for shopping, for eating, for things of that nature. Why not, I want to keep those people here in Verona first. So those are the things I campaigned on, those are the things I want to work towards. And like I said, I'm not out here to change the world on my own. I very much want to work with the rest of the council. Since I'm not the first one to bring up the block, I'm going to bring up the voting block, and that, it was obvious that the four of us did not want to come over here and take over things at the organizational meeting. We had the numbers to take the council president. We had the numbers to throw a wrench in all the committees if we wanted to. We did not do that, and we did not do that because we have respect, we understand the nature of the council, and we understand that all of us here want the best thing for Verona. And if we all want the best thing for Verona, I keep hearing that that's, that's the argument both sides are making, and that's an argument that you can't argue with, because I think that's why we're all sitting here. So, you know, and I've heard before we came, before I even took office, when I was talking with people, there's a fear that, you know, we wanted to take over, and that's just not the case. But when I said that the people spoke a few weeks ago and spoke loudly, yes, they did, and that does not take away any of your authority to make decisions or being part of the decision process. But those constituents aren't just the constituents of the four of us elected, those are all of our constituents. So when they spoke in that election, they weren't speaking just to the two people who were on those ballots, they were speaking to all eight members of this council. And I think those are the people we need to answer to. Those are the ones who put us in these chairs, those are the ones we need to make, have in mind as we take our vote.
Thank you, Ms. Yours. Any additional comments? Ms. Dahl?
Just to explain my vote when it comes to the matter of the Plan Commission, I've spoken with Alder Yours and agree with his developmental philosophy and believe that he is a very intelligent individual who will be able to assess matters and gather information where necessary. So, that's just my two cents on the matter.
Thank you, Ms. Dahl. Mr. Charles?
I'd like to actually hear some expansion on what exactly is Mr. Yours' developmental philosophy, because I really haven't heard much of specifically that so far. Well, like I said before, you can't argue that you want high-quality things by any stretch of the imagination. Like I said, I'm pro bringing business into town. I want to see downtown be built in a way that makes it convenient and walkable. I want to see more shops, like I said, like Adelweiss Cheese coming into Verona, something that sets us apart from Madison, something that sets us apart from Pittsburgh, things of that nature. I was talking with Mr. Steiner before the meeting about the historical aspect of the city, being as I am a historian. One of the wonderful things I think we can do right away is point out Verona's historical aspects and, you know, work in bringing all the aspects of Verona together. I'm not against business, I'm not against growth by any stretch of the imagination, but I want it done in a responsible manner. I don't want to neglect parts of the city, and not saying that anyone did, you know, purposefully, but I do know many of my constituents feel that that happened. So that's more of where I'm coming from.
Mr. Charles?
Okay, just a couple of things in there. So Adelweiss Cheese, I'm glad you like that, you're welcome. We debated for quite some time economic development assistance to bring that redevelopment project into our downtown, and we were successful in bringing them here. So that, I think, I will chalk up as a success for the folks that are both here and were replaced this spring. As far as people wanting shopping, let me tell you my philosophy on that. I'm not big on retail development here in Verona. The businesses that have the low-paying, big-retail jobs, I'm perfectly fine with the fact that we have enough of them located close by that people can get to them by car, by bus, by taxi, by whatever, you know, by moped if you really want to. I'm fine with not having a whole bunch of non-sustainable, non-living wage-type jobs here in Verona. Folks want to shop at, you know, Target, whatnot, that's fine. I moved away from the neighborhood that Target was built right next to because I saw the graffiti starting to come up the hill from Highway PD. I decided that's not the environment I wanted to live in, so I'm perfectly fine with going elsewhere to shop. Businesses that we bring in here, I want to be like the Adelweiss Cheeses, like the Sojo Blouse Salon, like the Ryanan Chiropractic Office, the Miller Supermarket, the Sausier, good-quality businesses that go a little further for their employees and for their communities. I don't want to bring businesses into downtown just for the sake of bringing businesses downtown. I want to be able to see the higher-quality ones, the ones that are going to pay better, the ones that are going to put more in their community and take ownership of their community here. And I think we've been successful at doing that. Sure, there's an empty building sitting downtown, there's always going to be an empty something sitting downtown, okay? There are a lot fewer empty spots sitting downtown right now than there were four years ago, okay? That's another success area. When you look at, when you talk about people saying that the downtown's been neglected, I take exception to that. Particularly in the comprehensive planning process, we took a lot of looks at what to do with downtown, particularly the traffic and parking. I heard at least one of you during the campaign mention, well, why don't we get rid of the parking on Main Street and make that four lanes of traffic so we can get traffic through the fast street? You know what? During Plan, I brought that up. It's not that it wasn't considered, it's that it was considered. Do you know how much objection you get from the business community downtown if you even mention getting rid of parking down there? They're already complaining because their customers can't get to them, because they have to park a ways away, okay? You want to talk about roundabouts, making the traffic signal bigger, pairs of one-ways? I'm looking at the agenda for the Downtown Steering Committee. This agenda for the Downtown Steering Committee meeting at 7:30 AM Friday, it was basically a rehash of every discussion I've been a part of for the past four or five years, okay? It's not that nobody's been considering the downtown, it's not that nobody's been looking at options. We've had a hard time coming up with options that people can agree about and can compromise on and can live with. That is why not much has happened downtown, okay? It's because we have involved the people who are affected by it, and none of them can agree on what they want. You are going to make somebody mad regardless of which option you choose, trust me, okay? That's part of why it hasn't been done, okay? Because we can't get the voters to speak in droves on what option they want. The voters will come out and say, yes, be nice to kittens, until you tell them that means you've got to kill all the dogs, okay? Until they realize what the trade-off is, the voters are going to tell you every day, revitalize downtown, grow responsibly, take care of the environment. You bet, absolutely, I agree. There's compromises, like I said before, okay? These are opposing forces. You put a paired one-way, you know, right through the middle of what is now the Chamber of Commerce Building over there, you know, and that being in the street, everybody on Schuman shows up in droves to tell you you're an idiot. And by the way, I agree with them. You want to put a roundabout in? Okay, you have to tear down at least two of the four businesses on that corner, pick them. And how are you going to get their land, by the way? Imminent domain? Are you, the heavy hand of government, going to come in and force this? Okay, this is why downtown progress hasn't happened in the grand scales that your voters told you to make it happen in, okay? Because there are compromises, there's discussion that has to happen. And the fact that none of the four of you has been involved in any of this in the last five years and wants to walk in and tell me the voters told you what to do, I've been in the middle of this entire time, okay? It's reality-check time here, folks. You can talk all the great things in saving kittens all day you want, but until you've been here for a while, you don't know what we've done, what we've prepared for, and the baby steps we've made for progress. That's why I have a hard time voting for any of the four of you on Plan Commission. It's not because you're all funded and organized by the same person, and everyone voted for everything that was sent out by the postcards. It's not because of that, okay? It's because you don't have the experience to do that job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Mr. Yours?
Can I just, this remark is going to be really short and sweet. I love the respect of this council. I am flabbergasted at the amount of condescension sent here. This is absurd.
Mr. Diaz?
I'd like to make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
To defer it? We have a motion by Mr. Diaz to defer action on selection of a city council representative on the Plan Commission to the next meeting. All those in favor, excuse me, we have a motion. Is there a second?
May I actually ask a question first?
Yes.
I just wondered why the other standing committees have three council members and the Plan Commission only has one. Is there possibility to change the ordinance to have more than one alderperson on the Plan Commission?
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
Yeah, I did look at the state statute on this earlier today. State statute has a default procedure for selecting Plan Commission members. It's appointment by the mayor. I believe there's a requirement that there are seven members, at least three of which need to be citizen appointees. By city ordinance, and state statute allows that you can establish a different process by ordinance, our ordinance sets that there would be one appointee from the city council and that that has the two-thirds requirement. So I think it would be possible to amend our ordinance. That's not something we could do this evening, but if there's a desire to look at the process, it would take an amendment of our ordinance. That ordinance would need to be published, and then we'd follow whatever new procedure would be established in the ordinance.
Mr. Manley?
I appreciate the question, and ultimately, I'd like to withhold my second of Mr. Diaz's motion if there's more discussion that would be had. I guess the only follow-up question I would have to Ms. Riki's inquiry is, if there were two alders that were allowed to serve on the Plan Commission, would we have quorum or walking quorum concerns based upon the size of our body?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that would be an issue.
Would, could I?
Go ahead, Mr. Manley.
Could there be a concern about our committee structure where two members of the Plan Commission could constitute a quorum of a standing committee?
That could occur, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Manley, your second holds then?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'd like to renew my second of Mr. Diaz's motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz, second by Mr. Manley, to defer action until the next meeting, the first meeting in May. All those in favor of deferrals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Nay.
Will the nays raise their hand, please? We have two nays. We'll let the minutes reflect that Mr. McGilvery and Mr. Steiner voted no. That has been deferred to the first meeting in May. Okay, we are on to Old Business Agenda Item 10-2. Mr. Burns, if you would provide the background, please.
Yeah, this item is related to potential lease agreements with US Cellular for proposed locations within Verona. I can provide some background on this in open session. The agenda is noticed to allow the council to go into closed session if desired for items specifically related to negotiations. The background on this is US Cellular is currently located on an old water tower, which is on county property in the Badger Prairie Park. They have been notified by the county several months ago now that that water tower was going to be taken down, and they would need to remove their equipment. US Cellular has been looking for an alternative location for those antennas. I believe they first talked with Dade County to see if there was the possibility of doing something else in the park. That's a high site on the hill. I believe they proposed a stealth flagpole or other option. That was rejected. US Cellular then looked at some other locations, they considered a private site nearby, they had considered the Redden Soccer Park area, they had conversations with the school district. None of those went forward, they weren't able to reach an agreement. And then US Cellular had approached the city about locating a pole on, one of the light poles in Stompel Field in Community Park on the south side of Verona Avenue. And their original proposal they came in with was a 140-foot tower. Right now, for reference, the lights at Stompel Field are 80 feet high, so this would extend an additional 60 feet with the cell antenna on the top of that 60-foot extension. The city council considered that, told US Cellular that the council was not interested in that due to concerns about the aesthetics and the appearance, and in particular, the height. And then US Cellular went back, discussed the item further, and came back with an alternative proposal, and that was to have a two-site solution, which would include locating the city's north water tower. And just for background again, the city has three water towers, north, central, and south. The central and south water towers currently have cellphone antennas on the top, the north does not and has space available. So they proposed to locate on that north water tower and then to construct a shorter tower on a light pole at Stompel Field, limited to no more than 100 feet. So what they proposed is you'd have your 80 feet, you'd have the light at 80 feet, and then they'd have the extension with the antenna on top of that, not to exceed 100 feet. Earlier this year, the city council had directed staff to work on negotiations for this two-site solution. Staff has begun that process. We wanted to bring it back before the council for an update and to get some additional direction. And then, just to refer to the items that are in your packet, the last four pages of the council packet reflect the proposed tower that would be at Stompel Field. And I think out of these, perhaps the third sheet, so second to the last page in the packet maybe demonstrates this best. There's a conceptual image in the upper-left corner that shows an existing light, and then it shows the proposed light pole tower at the 80 feet with the cell extension extending approximately 20 feet on top of that. There's also a map in your packet, and I apologize, I did not copy very well, but it shows There's also a map in your packet, and I apologize, I did not copy very well, but it shows in black the locations where U.S. Cellular currently is in and around Verona, and then in red, the three city water towers. Originally, the city had asked, you know, could you just locate it on one of our water towers and have that be the only location? And the feedback that we'd received back from U.S. Cellular was that that did not provide adequate coverage for the area in the southwest portion of the city of Madison as well as the eastern portion of the city of Verona in the Hawthorne Hills East Hill and Military Ridge subdivision. That's why they came back proposing the lower tower to service primarily those areas and then our north water tower which would serve the north and west of the city. Would that be available to answer questions? And then if there's a desire for information on the status of the financial terms or other terms of a lease, that's a potential closed-session discussion.
Mr. Diaz?
Did they give any word on whether this will improve, keep the same as far as cellphone coverage goes in Verona?
Yeah, they did provide some indication and some maps showing locations of cellphone coverage. Likely at the one-hundred-foot tower, I don't think that's going to improve service. I think they're trying to cover what they have right now. The one-hundred-and-forty may have enhanced that in some areas. I think the area where it does provide some enhancement is to the north and west of the city, out towards Epic, maybe some of our northern neighborhoods, and then possibly in future growth areas to the north.
Thank you, that's good to hear.
Mr. Manley?
Thank you. I guess, Bill, we've seen this proposal a number of times, this time and the time previous. They've been talking about putting an additional antenna on the, the north tower, water tower behind Country View Elementary. And I think it's important for, for the people that, that Mr. Yours and I represent, that folks understand that placing the antenna on the, on the tower in that location necessitates the building of a equipment shelter that would be very nearby some existing residences. And none of the renderings that we've seen up to this point have shown the location of where those proposed, that proposed building would be, its size, its appearance or anything. And I think, given some of the pretty strong reaction from people in the northern part of the, the city when, when TDS began putting the white broadband boxes in various locations, this would be substantially larger than those. And I think if we're going to have this same proposal at a future meeting, I think it would be helpful for all of us if U.S. Cellular would be willing to show us precisely where they would propose to place the cellular equipment shelter, you know, what sort of what the footprint of that building would be, and aesthetically what they would propose for that building to look like.
Thank you, Mr. Manley. Further questions or comments? Mr. Charles?
One thing I would point out here with regard to the equipment shed that would be built at the base of the water tower, part of the outrage with the TDS lawn fridges going in was that people had paid a certain amount of money and invested in their homes, and then this condition was dropped into their neighbor's backyard, impacting their property values after they'd already purchased the home. I think one of the big things we have that's, that's different here in this case is any of those future residences that would be built close to this water tower would be built after this, this equipment shed went in. So the folks choosing to purchase those homes would be able to take this into consideration. I'm not saying that that nullifies any influence of the equipment shed that would go next to the water tower, but I think that, that is a significant difference, that folks would make a conscious decision knowing it's there.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Other questions or comments? Ms. Riki?
I know that it's possible for water towers to burn down because of the wires that go inside, and I just wondered if, has there already been discussion about how, how it's going to be made safely so the wires are covered and so there's no risk of fire?
Mr. Burns?
When the, the north water tower was put in, it was designed and built with conduit for the wire already in the water tower structure. So it's designed to be able to accommodate cell carriers. The design of the ground building is something that would need to be done and how that ties into the water tower. But the water tower itself has, has that conduit built into the structure.
Additional questions or comments in open session? It appears to me that in order to move forward, that Mr. Burns is gonna need some additional guidance from the common council. Unless there's anything else in open session, I would suggest that we move to go into closed session. Mr. Charles?
I make a motion that we convene into closed session as authorized by statute section nineteen point eight-five, parant one, parant E, for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specific public business where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In this case, contract negotiations.
We have a motion by Mr. Charles to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. This action requires a roll call vote. We'll have a clerk read the roll, please. Ms. Lynch?
Alderperson Charles?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
Aye.
Alderperson Doyle?
Aye.
Alderperson Manley?
Aye.
Alderperson McGilvery?
Aye.
Alderperson Riki?
Aye.
Alderperson Steiner?
Aye.
And Alderperson Yours?
Aye.
That motion carries. We'll let the minutes reflect that Alderperson Diaz voted no. We are now in closed session. And then Ms. Lynch wanted to make a comment as well. Mr. Burns?
Yeah, for the, the city of Verona, the border review, which reviews property assessments, consists of the mayor, common council, and the city clerk. By state statute, the border review is required to meet within thirty days after May second. However, often the, the assessment roll is not completed and ready at that time, and this is a revaluation year, meaning they're doing new modeling and all properties will have changes. So it looks like it will not be until later this summer that the, the roll will be available. However, what we've done in the past is held an initial meeting. Usually, it's right before the council meeting. We'll do any updates that we need to do at that time and then recess the border review until the roll is completed. So the recommended date would be to do that on, on Monday, the thirteenth, and do a probably six forty-five meeting of the border review.
Okay, Ms. Lynch?
I had sent out an email to all of you this afternoon regarding board of review training. I'd like to have it a meeting where we could open it up to other communities for training too. Some of you have been through it before, some of you haven't. The dates I have proposed are Wednesday, May twenty-second, and Thursday, May twenty-third. So if you could please respond to me with your availability, we're looking to do a late afternoon or early evening training to accommodate most people's schedules, but please let me know and we're looking to get that scheduled, and I'll keep you in the loop at with what, with what we do get scheduled for the board of review training.
Thank you, Kami. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you, Ms. Lynch. So, do we have to retrain?
Yes, your, your training's good for two years when you, when you do it, and then you have to retrain. And it, it's a reval year, so it's, for us, it might be a good idea for those of you that, that are due.
I would encourage you all because it's very exciting.
It is two hours required, but you learn a lot.
And, Mr. Burns?
I just want to mention that there is online training through the Whistline program for anyone that's not able to attend the session, but if there's anything more exciting than doing it in person, it's sitting and watching somebody do it on the computer. So, we were hoping to try to make the, the session, we've got a very good speaker lined up to do the training for us, Tom Wilson, who's the administrator for Westport. But if you absolutely cannot make it, there are other options for training too that, that Ms. Lynch can get out to you.
And the other comment that I was gonna make, we have to have at least two of us who are on the border of review that are certified and legal and have, have taken the training. So Ms. Lynch and I are both certified. We do have two, but that in no mean, means that you should not take the training, especially in case one of us can't be there. We would strongly encourage that you, that you do that. I really like the idea of doing something in person rather than online. I know the last two times I've done online, and I think that if we did it in person and there's more interactivity, we're all gonna benefit more from some of the questions that are asked. So I would certainly encourage you to be involved in that. Okay, we do not need to take any official action on that May thirteenth date, we'll just do that automatically. Next, we have discussion on possible action setting. The meeting date for the second meeting of the common council may due to the Memorial Day holiday. Typically, we have done that on the next day, on that Tuesday, and we just wanted to check with people if, if that works for the majority of the council. I'm seeing a few heads nod.
What day is that?
Twenty-eighth. It'd be the twenty-eighth, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth of May.
Tuesday, the twenty-eighth. Is there anyone that, that has an issue with meeting on that Tuesday? Seeing none, okay, we will move forward with that. Ms. Lynch, do we have operator licenses this evening?
We just have one from Nicholas Amin.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Charles. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Manley. All in favor of the approval of the operator license signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank you for that. We are on announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? Mr. Burns?
Yeah, the city received a donation of a, a large sculpture entitled We the People, which represents the, or has a representation of the Statue of Liberty in the U.S. Constitution. I did email out a picture of it. I have just one here. We have the, the physical sculpture here at City Hall. It's in the elected officials' office in the far corner, if anyone wants to, to go back there and take a look at it. Right now, we're looking into options for how and where we could mount that, trying to find some location in the City Hall lobby. If you'd like to see it or have any thoughts about where exactly we should mount it, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any further announcements this evening? Seeing none, a motion, um, go ahead. Go ahead, that's fine.
Because the Public Works meeting is also that scheduled for, would, would be scheduled for Monday, May twenty-seventh, is that also automatically moved to the twenty-eighth?
Not automatically, but we certainly would take that into consideration.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't be adjourned, or having it on the Monday.
It would just be canceled?
Well, more than likely, it depends on what's on the agenda, but more than likely it would just go before the council meeting.
Okay.
Good question.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or announcements, all those, uh, we need a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry. We have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Charles, was that? Oh, Mr. Mr. Yours. A motion to adjourn is non-debatable. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.